Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this special called meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, July 30th, 2015. The time is 3:00 PM. Please rise as Mayor Pro Tim Schneider leads us in the invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Davis.
Most gracious having followed with bow before you, just thanking you for your almighty power and your grace and your love that you've given each and every one of us. Lord, I ask you just to be with this city, be with the people making the decisions with the city, and that we would have your glory in mind in all of our decision-making, Lord. Thank you for the weather you give us. Thank you for the citizens that represent this city, and thank you for an open government, Lord. Thank you for this day. We ask you just to bless it and be with us today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
I think I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit because I know that there are several folks in the audience that are here about Item 7. And out of respect to their time, we'll go ahead and take that first. Consider adopting a resolution to take action on the Temple Police Association's petition requesting recognition of bargaining agent is required by the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 142.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is Item 7 on the agenda. We will refer to it as the meet and confer petition. Meet and confer is the language that's used in Local Government Code, Chapter 142. So that'll be the reference. On July 2nd of this year, City Secretary received a petition requesting recognition of bargaining agent from the Temple Police Association, or TPA. It is signed by 102 Temple Police Officers, and it is requesting that the city recognize TPA as the sole and exclusive bargaining agent for all police officers that are employed by the city. As I stated, the meet and confer process is governed by Chapter 142 of the Local Government Code. It allows a police officers' association to file such a petition with the city requesting recognition as the bargaining agent for all police officers. And once the petition is filed, City Council has certain duties within a time period, and they have to, you all have to determine whether the city will recognize TPA as the bargaining agent and adopt the meet and confer process. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail. The petition, sorry, has to be signed by a majority of the officers excluding the Chief of Police and the two deputy chiefs that we have. And currently, I have to make a correction to that number. We currently employ 144 police officers excluding those three positions, and again, 102 officers have signed the petition. And the bottom bullet is just the definition of police officers' association that's provided in the statute, but it's basically an employee organization that represents police officers for the purpose of dealing with terms and conditions of employment. If the meet and confer process is adopted by City Council or adopted through an election process, it allows the city to meet and confer with TPA over terms and conditions of employment. Could be wages, rates of pay, hours of work, those types of things. And it's permissive, so you can recognize TPA as the bargaining agent. And once you do that, it's not that the city is required to meet with TPA to discuss these issues, but they may. It's a little, it's a little odd. The city manager does have to select one or more persons to represent the city as the city's sole and exclusive bargaining agent. Any deliberations between the city and TPA must be done in a public meeting. And again, city and TPA are not required to reach agreement on any particular topic, but if they do, the agreement has to be in writing, and it has to be ratified by the council and majority of the police officers. A written meet and confer agreement does actually preempt any contrary state, statute, local ordinance, or civil service commission rule or provision. So it's a pretty powerful document once you come to that agreement. And while a meet and confer agreement is in effect, the city may not accept a petition requesting to adopt collective bargaining under a different chapter of Local Government Code. So the petition's been filed. What is next? Within 30 days of the petition being filed, which we are coming up on that 30-day deadline, the council has to take one of the following actions. You can grant recognition to TPA and decide to adopt the meet and confer process under Chapter 142. You can defer granting recognition and order an election by the voters to determine whether the city will adopt the meet and confer process. Or you can order what's called a certification election to determine whether TPA does in fact represent a majority of the affected police officers. And I'm going to go through each one of those options separately. Option number one is just granting recognition to TPA and recognizing them as the sole and exclusive bargaining agent and adopting the meet and confer process. If council does choose to grant recognition, the council can withdraw recognition at a later date by providing TPA not less than 90 days' written notice and to let them know that they are withdrawing recognition and that if there is any written agreement, that it will not be renewed. So if you do grant recognition today, then the city manager would move forward with designating one or more persons to serve as the bargaining agent for the city. And that would just kind of start the process for meeting with TPA and start a conversation about maybe what their concerns are on different terms and conditions of employment.
Is there a timeframe in the initial document that says how long this TPA will represent officers? I mean, the initial document is for a year, or is it for six months?
No, once you grant recognition to TPA, they will be the sole and exclusive bargaining agent unless or until another petition is filed by a different organization, which that's allowed for under the statute. You could have a different organization come in in the next six months and say, well, now we represent a majority and we want to be recognized. And then you kind of have to go through the process again. So option number two is actually ordering an election to allow the voters to decide whether the city will adopt the meet and confer process. The election has to be held as part of the next regularly scheduled general election for municipal officers. That's how it's worded, that is how it's worded in the statute. And that would, for us, that would be May of 2016, so it wouldn't be on the ballot until that election. I did include the ballot language in that third bullet, but it's just authorizing the city of Temple to adopt the meet and confer process. Do also want to note that if you do adopt the meet and confer process, there is still the prohibition against strikes and organized work stoppages. So police officers have the, they cannot go on strike, basically. If the council chooses this option, then if you want to withdraw recognition, you actually have to wait two years from the date of the election. And in order to withdraw, you have to go to another election, so. Option number three is the certification election, and that is what I would kind of describe as an internal election to determine whether TPA does in fact represent a majority of the officers. If council does order a certification election, then staff would work with TPA representatives to determine how that actually would be carried out. I did reach out to City of Georgetown. They held a certification election last fall, and I think they're in the process of doing another one now. And their HR director kind of walked me through their process. They did a two-day secret ballot election that was held in the city secretary's office, and it just allowed, held at different times so that it could accommodate police officers and their different schedules. But they had to come into the city secretary's office, fill out a ballot saying either I elect that organization to be my representative, or I elect to have no representative. And then you have a, they had a representative from their association and a city representative present when the ballots were counted. So pretty simple process, but it's a, staff just works with TP, would work with TPA to determine how that would be carried out. And the statute does say that the association is liable for all expenses that have to do with that election, so they would, they would pay for those expenses. Couple of other notes on that. If we go through the certification election and a majority of the officers do elect to have TPA serve as their representative, then council, you still retain the option, option number one and option number two. So we would come back to you. You would certify the results, and then you would choose to grant recognition and adopt the meet and confer process, or you could still order an election by the voters. And then just a note that this option is really just a method to ensure that TPA does in fact have the support of the majority of the officers. And I will note, I did ask the TPA president for a list of all members of TPA, and according to that list, there were 79, currently 79 members of TPA, and 70 of those members signed the petition. You had 102 total signatures, so you had some signatures that were not actually TPA members.
How many unions or organizations are there?
Well, I know of at least one other, and it's commonly referred as FOP. FOP, and that stands for, so there's at least one other organization. I know CLEET, which is the Police Officers' Association. I think you'll hear from one of their representatives here in a little while. There's members of that as well, but I think there's overlap between the three organizations.
So an officer does not have to be with the association to approve them conducting business for them or
Right.
bargaining for them or their salary. So, and if this went through, where does that put our police chief evidently, I guess, for salaries, and that he has no say, or?
Well,
How does that work?
I don't, it wouldn't necessarily be that he has no say. You know, we would, whoever is designated as the bargaining agent for the city, that individual or individuals would work with TPA to see what it is they're, I guess, requesting as far as, you know, how compensation is figured or scheduling, different issues like that. So at this point, we don't know exactly maybe what TPA is looking for on the different terms or their conditions of employment, but if they're granted recognition, that would start that process to figure out. And again, it's odd, a little odd to me. You can grant recognition and adopt the process, and, you know, we could meet, staff and TPA could meet and talk about the different issues, but you may never actually put anything in writing, and you don't have to, according to the statute, so.
And let's just say salary or time. If they were the bargaining agent for the police department, they would be the only one that had to say as far as those two items? I mean, our police chief or any of those other folks would never, would even be involved?
I think the police chief would still have the ability to weigh in on those issues, just like city manager would under the meet and confer process. It doesn't limit, I don't get the sense that it limits what those two individuals or those two positions, how they would be involved in the process. In a budgeting, they would still be involved, but you would have, you would have TPA there with the ability to voice or be, serve as the representative for police officers on those issues, so. So those are the three options.
Why would an officer not be a member of TPA? I mean, are there dues collected? Does FOP and TPA, are they, for lack of a better term, are they against each other? I mean, are they looking, are there different goals for each organization?
I, I can't answer those questions, but I do know that we have representatives here that can, that will be speaking momentarily, and they can weigh in on that.
I know, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
On the petition that was submitted, what was the language on that, or what, do you have a copy of that?
I do. And it just states, "In accordance with Texas Local Government Code, Section 142.056, we the undersigned police officers employed by the City of Temple, Texas hereby request that the City of Temple recognize the Temple Police Association as the sole and exclusive bargaining agent for all the police officers employed by the municipality excluding the head of the police department and exempt employees, the chief and deputy chiefs, for meet and confer negotiations with the City of Temple." And then each of the undersigned states that he or she is a qualified police officer employed by the City of Temple and personally signed this petition, that he or she has not signed any other petition for the same measure, and that he or she has read the said petition and understands the petition, so that's all.
Would this process preclude civil service rules and procedures that we currently built in?
It could if you, if we agree on that. So it actually could change our current, if city staff and TPA agreed to it and you put it in writing, it could change current civil service rules and procedures, and that could be with reference to how discipline is handled, which would be a big one. But yes, it could change, it could, you know, change some pretty big rules that we have if agreed to. Yes, go ahead.
I was just looking at the numbers. I understand there's 144 police officers, and there's only, and there's 79 members, and only 70 signed a petition, and we keep saying they're the majority, so does that mean?
Hundred and two.
Hundred and two, actually, some that don't.
Yeah. They had a, right.
They signed it, but they're not all members.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Right. So just a couple of slides on advantages and disadvantages of the process. Potential advantages to the meet and confer process, while, as I mentioned earlier, while it is in effect, it precludes the filing of a petition to adopt collective bargaining under Chapter 174 of the Local Government Code, and collective bargaining would require the city to participate in negotiations regarding the terms and conditions of employment. It does, as we just discussed, it does allow variation of civil service rules regarding hiring requirements, pay, benefits, promotion standards, and the disciplinary process. And it does provide a venue for communication and collaboration with officers regarding some important employment issues. Potential disadvantages of the process, over time, and depending on the specifics of any meet and confer agreement that's reached, it could result in income disparity between public safety employees and general government employees, could be some loss of flexibility in establishing pay and benefits, and could potentially require significant staff time and cost. And so the action that has to be taken today is you basically have to decide if you want Option 1, 2, or 3. And again, Option 1 is granting recognition to TPA and adopting the process. Option 2 is ordering the election and sending it to the voters, and it wouldn't go until next May. And as you all know, you've ordered elections before. When the election date gets closer, there would be additional ordinances or resolutions that have to be passed to actually order that. But this resolution, if you went that route today, would just record your intent to move forward with that next year. And then Option 3 is to order the certification election, just to be sure that TPA does represent the interests of the majority of the officers. And if that happens, then staff will work with TPA to determine how that will be conducted. After the election, we'll have to come back to council for you to certify the results and, again, decide if you want to, if they do get a majority, if you want to grant recognition or order an election. If they don't get a majority, we'll come back and cert, have you certify the results, but that will be the end of the process.
The other thing is that if it was granted, the sole bargaining would be, person or organization would be TPA, and if someone was a member of a different organization like the FOP, they would have no say. I mean, so why would be, why would you be a member? It's basically, this would be the only game as far as if you want to be at the table.
We're not scheduled for a public hearing, but I know that there's a representative that is, that is wishing to speak, and so if, if the representative would step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. Charles B. Wilkerson, executive director of Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas in Austin, and we represent roughly 80 municipal and county associations throughout the state. And we, I'm here today, I think I was invited here, because we wrote the statute. And both of us that are here in the audience today can explain what our intent was, and it's never been challenged. It's a great tool for you to use, and I'd like to diffuse any fear and loathing that you might have with something new, but I'm age 57, so I don't like to hear about anything new either. Do I have a time limit? Because I kind of, well, I hear the gavel go down. You can tell I'm used to the Capitol. We've got a little PowerPoint here, and I'll try to talk as fast as I can. The Texas Meet and Confer law, the paradigms for locally adaptive, permissive, interest-based negotiations. Let me tell you, in 1945, the Texas Legislature decided to enact civil service, state police fire civil service. So they voted that in and said you cannot recognize local association. You guys in, trying to deal with your problems or issues, not many problems, I hope, here, but your issues in locally, you understand legislature gets carried away sometimes. So they adopted this, but set in motion the structure of professional standards and sent it down to be elected locally, so only local voters could decide that. So the majority of the cities in Texas have state civil service, locally adopted. But it says clearly in there, you don't recognize a union, and it prohibits striking. So a generation later, 1973, the Texas Legislature, things had changed, so the legislature came back. I guess along about my freshman year of high school, and they gave collective bargaining to Texas police officers. And you can imagine, though guys that were still there from '45 in legislature, they probably had a problem with that. But it passed and became law. And it said, too, which is, kind of explains Texas way of thinking, you can tell my accent, that you can have collective bargaining, but it has to be enacted locally by the voters. So it set in, in motion a situation where we had a prohibition against associations being recognized, or you could have the most liberal northeastern model of labor, you'd have collective bargaining. So my first year at CLEET in '94, we talked openly about there not being a third way. So meet and confer was intended, I can tell you, legislative intent, it was all ours. It was intended to give you a third way to solve problems. Now, anything new sounds different to us and you question, you know, if I were, stand up here from New Jersey from AFL-CIO, you probably wouldn't have to ask me near as many questions. You just know. The fact is, this is a Texas law based on Texas kind of core principle. It's the only place in America where a non-union member gets to vote. So why did we go out and, you know, we didn't do it, but your officers went out and got signatures from guys that aren't in their association? Well, this meet and confer allows non-union members to vote on the contrary. It's completely wide open. It's the only place in America that has a, the right to have an open meeting, so the public can lock in. They're paying for the whole thing, why not? There are the voters, taxpayers, they can sit through the thing. Only thing private is caucus. So it is different, and intended to go in between the problem of not talking to your employees and it being prohibited by statute, to the only other way to talk to them is talk to them with collective bargaining rights, which has mandated federal guidelines. You will come to, you will meet, you will come to an agreement, and you have a certain amount of time. If you don't do that, then you're wound up in federal court. So meet and confer was our worldview, that you ought to be able to meet with your officers if you had an interest. And I can't tell you today whether or not we're ahead of your process here. I have no idea about that. That's something you, you ask yourselves, your officers. But this is an opportunity for police officers to sit down across from the employer and discuss issues. It's all interest-based. I'd say this, you're a great city, you're trying to keep it safe, you're going to have police officers. Police officers, on the other hand, are almost, you know, calling. Most of us don't want that job, so they're going to do their job, no matter what decision is today or any other day, but they're going to do that job somewhere. So basically, I look at it as you being married. You're in this relationship, the question is, can you talk? And whether or not you can come to an agreement is either about the issue or the relationship, and it's something that needs to be worked out locally. So the law accomplishes changing the prohibition against recognition. It just allows you to do it. It allows for recognition of a local association. You can check all the contracts in Texas, CLEET's names not on any of them. The only thing we do is provide a service. We'll sit with you and talk about the issues, but we don't have any authority. The statewide organization does not negotiate the contract, can't be the compelling reason for anything to happen. It sets out rules for adoption without an election. It sets out rules for an election without a petition, like a collective bargaining petition. And it allows a local repeal. Let me just say that if you choose Option 1, it sounds like to me you're not, you know, from just experience in government listening, but if you were to choose Option 1, it doesn't lock you into anything. It does lock you into a relationship. These guys getting, I'm surprised that you got 102 real live, walk-in, talking policemen to sign anything. After 22 years of experience, I just, you know, cops are not political animals. So they're interested in a process here, and they don't care who does it. So if you set out the rules and you recognize them today, or you table it and you come back in two weeks or whenever the date is, your deadline, and you recognize them then, all you've done is set in motion something that you're in control of your half of the table. Nobody can be compelled to do anything. So in the details, local association asks for recognition, they've done it. City council can opt in by recognizing the association, adopting meet and confer. Now, this passed in 2005, so we're talking about, in the House, you had Speaker Tom Craddock, the most conservative Republican I think I ever met, that came into office in '72 with the Nixon landslide. Perry signed it into law, and David Dewhurst was lieutenant governor. So this is not a bastion of liberal thought and some kind of labor idea. This is locally adopted structure so that you can talk to each other. So the council can set an election on a uniform municipal dates only, and citizens can repeal meet and confer by circulating petition and submitting it to the city. Now, I think all in all, I believe I've counted four meet and confer laws that I've personally worked on and successfully passed in my career, and all of them can be repealed. This is, this is not something for either side to have a hammer in control of the other side. It's about mutual interest. It's, it gets you out of not talking, and it keeps you from going to the standard, traditional American labor form of collective bargaining. So meet and confer to be successful, local leaders first agree that there exists a climate of mutual interest, and I have no idea where you're at along that way. But if that doesn't exist, this thing will just be a tool, and it'll just lay in the toolbox. Gaining collective bargaining rights has been referred to as going to war, and I've been through a few of those. I'd say meet and confer is the, it's the peace talks. It's the conversation. Local police associations want to force the city to negotiate, they want to bring you to your knees, they want to spend all the money on them. Meet and confer is not the tool they would need for that. So natural obstacles to meet and confer just be overcome by using a process to increase your communication regarding common interest. If you look around the state, Denton, Waco, Abilene, those, that's not Austin. Those are cities that are, I think, above the I-10 corridor that I think of as union-friendly places. And so And so they all have adopted that. There are others, I'm probably slow in remembering. But meeting confer is a tool, only be placed in the hands of government and local association as a joint interest and seeks to find common ground to solve local issues. Now, some of the questions that there were, what happens to the guys that aren't in the association, it's not uncommon for them to sit and have someone that's outside to have a seat to table, it happens all the time. It's not uncommon for, and the chief, of course. That was a legitimate question over there, that you're worried about the guy running the department, and whether the department still has its head. Of course, he's, he or she is still in charge of the department, and they're going to be at the table, and they're going to be telling the city manager like they do right now, I need more officers, I need more cars, I need more qualified people, I need more people bilingual, I need more females on the street, I need, those are issues that cities, you know, deal with and work together to achieve. So neither side can be compelled to do anything. In fact, I probably should just stop talking right there. Nobody can make you do anything. And it's not by accident, we didn't compromise. That was, we wrote that in there as, for the tool. So there can be no demands from either side. You start demanding, you've already lost meeting confer. The permissiveness of meeting confer, it, I wanted it to appeal to everybody, that you could use this if you needed it, you don't need it, you don't use it. It's successful, both sides work to understand one another's interests and issues, and no agreement has to be reached. So it's not complicated. So the whole point was to allow you to talk with your employees and come to an agreement without having to go to collective bargaining. Texas has changed. I don't have to tell you guys that, the rubber's meeting the road right here in Temple. We have a new set of voters, we have a new set of citizens, we have people with political interests that we'll see changing all the time. So we don't always know what, a generation from now, a short time from now, we don't really know what the people from a different country, the grandparents are from somewhere else, we don't know how they're going to vote. We don't know what an interest might change or be. So meeting confer takes it in hand now, and says, you have the ability for your officers to meet, and you can get a contract if you can agree to it. And it's just a tool, it allows you to talk to your officers, and it keeps everything local. I would say this about the climate in Texas, in the last legislative session, I was raised up in Texas politics, believing that local control was sacred, that you guys knew best. And when you got to an agreement, when your cop sense is rock solid, it supersedes state law if you do it. And why does it supersede state law? Because there are things, I can, I won't look at the city attorney while I'm talking, say if there's things in meet, in civil service you'd like to change right now, I know that. There are rules you'd like to weaken. Well, association would be the people to talk to, and you can come to an agreement, and it's rock solid, the things you agree to do will be enforceable by statute. And it's a wonderful tool when it, when it works. That was, I could stand up here and talk all day, call my wife and ask her, but I'll just ask if there's a question I can answer. But it's intended, I know it's different, it's not something you bargained for. We didn't ask these guys to circulate a petition here, this is, this is organic. They decided to do this, and we absolutely support any, any officers' association in adopting this. There's no place where we've ever seen it's hurt, we've never seen it repealed. Collective bargaining, I think, has only been repealed once in Texas, in one city. And it's, but meeting confer is, I think, the thing of the future. We thought, when it passed, that if we had five cities that would adopt it in the next ten years, that would just be revolutionary. And of course, we had five the first year. And so I would encourage you to look at it, and like you're doing, take your time. We're not sure, we're sure not here to push you. We think option number one is the easiest because it doesn't spend any money. I, I know it doesn't spend any money for an election on either side. I know the guys aren't afraid to go back and face a referendum internally inside the department. They, they had a hundred and two guys sign, where their officers signed one union card over another for state, who his attorney is, that's just, that's a private matter. And, and, and I tell you, whatever list you turned into them, it's probably already changed and grown one way or the other. So it's, it's sunlight, it opens all the windows and doors, it gives you complete control. And when you lose control, it gives control to the citizens. They can opt out of this thing with a petition and end it at any time they want, and, and that's not an accident either. We want it that way. If you have an agreement with your officers at home, and it's wrong, it's too rich, it's upside down, the faces and names on that die will change, and citizens will like somebody to get the union under control. If you browbeat the officers, mistreat them, try to pay them nothing, which is not happening here, if that happens, the die will change, and they'll like somebody to come in and help. Meeting confer is a great equalizer. It's a voltage regulator for the old people around here. It will fix things you need to fix and leave alone the things you don't. It'll allow you to table the things you want to put off to another date, it'll allow you to take up urgent issues, and it just increases dialogue, it's absolutely transparent, and gives the control back locally. There's nobody in Austin that can tell you to do anything after that, and neither union government or anything, it's yours. Answer a question if anybody had one.
How many communities in Texas have agreed to this, or have in place?
I think I'd be more likely able to. I think forty-four had adopted collective bargaining prior to two thousand and five. And so I think I probably could recite you the places, I think I'm, I don't sound like Rick Perry, but oops, I don't think I know the exact number right this moment, but Mesquite, Denton, Abilene, Balt Springs, Waco, cities like that have adopted meeting confer. Suddenly, I'm in Austin, Houston. Houston, Texas has meeting confer. San Antonio has collective bargaining. South of I-ten, lots of collective bargaining contracts. They openly call themselves union. You get north, the same process, and they call themselves an association, and we're very familiar with all that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you being here.
Any questions or comments?
If I could, if I can make a comment, we have a great deal of admiration and respect for our police force, and we appreciate everything that you do every day. Most of us can't fathom where near what you go through. To your point, sir, I would hope that, I, I've never looked at police as, the police department as something that I would ever be at war with. I would hope that, without even saying so, we're always at peace. We don't know what the future holds, and I, I can tell you that, that I will not be mayor forever, and, you know, the folks in the room will not be the same ones in the chairs. I will say that, that right now, this council and this administration have made a concerted effort to get along with everybody in the police department, and fire department, and any other department that we have. And I know our, Jonathan Graham, our current city manager, has quarterly meetings with different officers and firefighters, just to get their take on things. In this budget, we are hopefully going to adopt a nice pay increase for police officers because we felt that that, or we feel that that's lacking. And we also have a new chief arriving in about thirty days. And so I, I had the opportunity to meet with a couple of the association members, and I appreciated that opportunity. And I will say this publicly, that I think your timing is really bad. We are doing a great deal to make sure that y'all are taken care of, and we are continuing to do it. And we thought we were making very good strides, and unfortunately, we are, we're faced with this. And so, you know, again, I, I would say, I, I question the timing on it. I, I would hope that, that regardless of needing to adopt anything, we would always be able to meet and, and discuss differences. But it's not for us to say yes or no to it, I just wanted to tell you how I felt about it. And so, on that, if there are any other comments?
I felt the same way, as far as, you know, obviously had some questions about the chief. And I think that, you know, that person basically needs to take that division like other division heads do, and, and be a big part of that. And again, I don't completely understand this procedure, obviously. We hadn't been a part of it, but I would, I would hope that the, the officers would meet and confer with their chief, and the chief would do the same thing, and, and, you know, realize what they need and, and their needs, and go, go to bat and get those during budget time, and those types of things. So I'm a little bit confused, and I, again, it's, it's a new deal, and a little bit apprehensive there, but that's kind of, I'm not saying it's good, it's, it's, or it's bad, it's just, it's different.
Council, anything else?
I agree that, that the timing is probably not the best, with the new chief coming on, with the budget. I know, as the council, we, I shouldn't say as the council, the city takes great pains to do, you know, surveys to be sure that, that we, as a, as a city of Temple, are up to speed on the, the pay and benefits, et cetera, that, that are afforded to our civil servants. And I think we have, the, the way it's handling now, I, I believe is fair. So I'm, I, I look forward to learning more about this, but I think right now, the city of Temple is, is fair to all employees, not just the civil servants.
I'll entertain a motion on item seven. And we, if you'll remember, there are three options that we can choose from.
I would move to, to order certification election to determine whether the Temple Police Officer Association represents a majority of the effective police officers employed by the city of Temple.
Second. Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item three, under Budget Items, discuss the proposed FY twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget to include the various strategic and budget-related policy issues, but not limited to, discuss the certified property tax rolls, receive an overview and update regarding the community enhancement grant and public service agency grant programs, receive an update on the city's utility capital improvement program and related projects, and receive an overview and update regarding the strategic investment zone grant and incentive program. And we'll just go down the list, and Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you've been reminded many times during our overview of the budget and the budget calendar, on July twentieth, we received the certified property value rolls from the appraisal district. We filed the budget, it was filed based on an estimate, estimated tax value and estimated tax rate, and the tax rate was filed, or presented to stay within the rules of engagement that the city manager had laid out. The twenty sixteen certified value for the city, which excludes the reinvestment zone, came in at three point eight billion. That shows an increase of a hundred and forty-one point five million, that's new value and appraisals, for a total increase of three point eight three percent. The same info in a chart, it shows the increase at three point eight three percent, the far right green bar. The average annual increase over the past ten years has been about four point six seven. Next slide, please. The assessed value for the tax reinvestment zone, which is the, for the twenty sixteen, it showed an increase of thirty-nine point four one percent, a total value of six hundred and seventy million, and an increase that's net of any tax abatements of a hundred and eighty-nine point four million. Average annual increase for the reinvestment zone is twenty-seven point nine two percent. Again, this shows the same information in a graph. And, luckily, the, to, on the far, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, that added value is related to the power, Penn and Power plant, and those revenues are restricted to be used within the reinvestment zone. Again, from the preliminary, comparing the filed tax rate, which was an estimate, the estimated INS rate, the interest in sinking to pay debt, was point three oh six four. The maintenance and operation rate was point three three cents, or point thirty-three cents, for a total rate of point six three six four, for a hundred dollar, or hundred dollar valuation. And based on the values received, certified values, and effective tax rate calculations, we're proposing that the M and O rate be reduced to point three two three four. That's a little less than a half cent of what was filed in the preliminary budget, and it would maintain the INS debt rate of point three oh six four, for a to, total proposed rate of point six two nine eight. What does all of that mean to values? When you take the value and the rates, on the maintenance and operations side, which it would impact the tax levy and reduce the budget by four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The interest in sinking fund, it would reduce the filed budget by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And under the direction of the city manager, we've gone back through over the past two weeks, we've identified revised estimates and identified different line items that we can reduce expenditures or increase revenues, and stay within the rules of engagement. And that will be presented next, included in your agenda packet, it's released tomorrow, and presented to you on August sixth. I'll be happy to answer, it's going to, a brief overview of our certified tax base. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Any cuts that, that we made, or they just, were we able to, I mean, it doesn't directly impact any, any programs, or?
It, what we've recommended, and again, under direction of city manager, it's minor, what I'd consider minor programs, and, I mean, multiple areas. One of the recommendations, we funded three additional, the, funded the over hire, the dollars of the firefighters, not the physician, where you do have the latitude to continue to have the physician and not the dollars, but we're going to recommend reducing that from three to two. Some of it has to do with the way we account for discounts between different funds, the reinvestment zone. We've restructured some of the timing of issuing some of the debt. So, if you have any other programs to note, Ren? It's, it's a multitude, but probably.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Myers, do you have a presentation on the community enhancement grant?
And I did want to start just quickly with a reminder to council on the calendar. We have shorter and shorter and shorter each time we show this to you, just a few more key dates left. At your next regularly scheduled council meeting, you will adopt the annual action plan for CDBG. We also have your initial public hearing on the budget and the CIP plan, and you'll also set the preliminary tax rate and the dates for the public hearings on that tax rate. You do still have two upcoming special- You do still have two upcoming special meetings that are outside of your normally scheduled regular meetings. So, one of those is the 14th, which is a Friday at 8:30 a.m., and that will be to do the first public hearing on the tax rate. And then the budget adoption is scheduled for Thursday, the 27th of August, and that is currently proposed as a 3:30 meeting. So, just to note on your calendar before we get into public service agencies. So, one of the topics that council had asked at our last meeting to have a little bit more detail on is our public service agencies, and we also have done a little bit of a name change this year. So, what we used to call all of these public service agencies, we've distinguished between our general fund and hotel motel fund and our CDBG fund grants. The public service agency is really a term used in CDBG, and it can be confusing to staff and our grantees, so we just distinguish those two names. So, Community Enhancement Grant is what we're now calling what we used to refer to as public service agencies for general fund and hotel motel. So, we do have those two funding sources for our Community Enhancement Grants. Of course, council will recall that the Hotel Motel Fund is restricted and can only be used for qualified services related to tourism and cultural services. So, that is not a unlimited funding source for the grants. And then you do still have your public service agency, which is through our Community Development Program, and those can only, that's also a restricted funding source that can only be used for qualified public services that are processed and vetted through our CDBG program. And you will adopt those recommendations at your next meeting on next Thursday as part of your adoption of the Annual Action Plan. So, our Community Enhancement Grant is, are grants made to outside agencies and organizations that help the city leverage our service delivery and funding levels. They're in areas such as transportation, social services, economic development, leisure services, and tourism and cultural services as well. Our public, next slide, please. Our Public Service Agency Grant, again, is a grant made through our CDBG program. They're only available to eligible nonprofit services benefiting Temples low to moderate income residents. Some of the categories that can be funded under that program are employment services, crime prevention, childcare, health and welfare, education and recreation. So, we do have an open application process. We advertise in the local newspaper and on our website. We do a press release to let agencies know that the grant funding is available. Organizations are asked to make presentations to council and the city manager. You heard those presentations in May of this year. We do require that for any agency requesting $25,000 or more, and it's optional for anyone requesting less than that. We also have a staff committee that reviews the request in details and detail and makes recommendations to the city manager. The city manager makes his recommendation to the city council in the form of the preliminary budget that he files. And then, of course, council has ultimate authority over the grant program through the adoption of the preliminary, or the adoption of the budget. And so, at this point in the process is, as David used to say, your turn with the budget. So, if you had any changes, this would be the appropriate time. Just to give you a little history, in FY 2015, we received a little over $800,000 in requests from, for funding from 23 organizations. We were able to fund 17 organizations with a little over $550,000. This year, we received more requests, which is typical, needs continue to grow in our community. We received a little over $966,000 in requests for funding from 24 organizations, and your preliminary budget recommends funding 17 of those organizations at $575,500. This is the list of agencies that are, that are recommended for funding through the general And the next slide will show your hotel motel fund recommendations and your Community Development Block Grant Program recommendations and your grand total. Again, the CDBG agencies are, will be adopted through the Annual Action Plan at the August 6th meeting, and the other, the general fund and the hotel motel agencies would be adopted with the annual budget in the, on the August 27th meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Myers. And, Perelva? We can receive an update on the city's capital and utility capital, I'm sorry, city's utility capital improvement program and related project. I'm sorry.
And council, we have a brief update on the city's CIP as related to water and wastewater. Next slide. We're going to touch on four primary areas as listed. First, we're going to start with the overview. I'm going to let Damon Bonface, our utility director, talk about that. And then we're going to touch on Jeff Hamilton Park, our CIP, and then some of our treatment plant projects.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council for this opportunity. Just want to give a glance at our system. We are permitted by the TCQ. The city does own all their facilities. We're rate-based serviced, we're supported by the customer base, and we provide service not only to retail, but also wholesale and industrial customers as well, not only within our city limits, but outside of our city limits, too. And then, the last bullet point there shows that our current potable water system is a superior rated system, which is recognized by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. This slide here talks about the management of our utility system, our management not only by Public Works, the CMO's office and Public Information, but Finance and Legal, and to include our utility building as well, utility business office as well. And then to the right over there is the operations, which is the core of our system, with our, starting with our water system. We divert water, we treat it and deliver it, and then we collect the wastewater and convey it to the wastewater treatment plants. Not only, not only is wastewater collected, but also industrial discharge, which is managed by our industrial pretreatment program. And then, we also have conservation measures by use of water conservation, drought contingencies, and event of sudden emergencies. And then we also rely upon master planning as a roadmap or a guidance document to help us with capital improvements efforts for current needs and future needs. Our system is 24 hours a day operated, and while we maintain and provide capital efforts to our existing infrastructure, we're also looking always for different opportunities for expansion and growth. And, again, we also use master planning as a document to help us with that effort. We'll start here with our water system. Our source water is from the Leon River, is where we divert our water for treatment. This picture right here depicts the Brazos River Basin where the Leon River resides. The table there, you can see where Temple has essentially the seventh largest available acre feet of water there in the Brazos River Basin of a little over 30,000 acre feet. And then to the right, there's a red dot, and you can see where the Brazos, actually where the Leon River lies within the Brazos River Basin. And then our water routes are secured through the state of Texas and from the Brazos River Authority as well. As we look at our water system, we divert waters from the Leon River into our water treatment plant, which is comprised of a conventional membrane plant, and then we deliver the water through our water distribution to the community. Our water treatment plant, again, with two conventional plants, both of them combined are rated 41 million gallon per day capacity, and they're both operated by city staff. The water distribution, primary purpose is delivered of the potable water, not only for drinking, but also for fire protection. Our system is approximately 600 miles of water line comprised of different components, valves, fittings, fire hydrants, flushing valves, maintained daily in order for, to ensure proper operation. And not only that, we are also routinely providing different maintenance and upkeep for system reliability. The wastewater system receives the wastewater collection and conveys that water, or those fluids, into the wastewater treatment plant, which is treated at both of our city-owned facilities. And then, we discharge the effluent, and just kind of want to make a note there that while it does say into the environment, we do use a large portion of that for irrigation to our Wilson Park, along with diversion to Panda Energy out there east of town. Again, our wastewater collection system is comprised of about 400 miles of linear foot of line, different working components to allow for proper operation. And while we maintain regulation, regulation requirements, again, we're always looking at different ways to improve the infrastructure by different test methods for system reliability. My wastewater treatment plant, the city is served by two plants. There are Dozer Wastewater Treatment Plant and then our Temple Belton Wastewater Treatment Plant with a combined capacity 17.5 million gallons per day. They're both operated by the Brazos River Authority, and while they're both owned by the city, I do want to point out that the Temple Belton Plant is a 75, 25 percent ownership shared with the City of Belton, with Temple being 75 percent owner. And that's it. Thank you.
We've recently been looking a little closer at Jeff Hamilton Park area and taking a little closer look at just the infrastructure needs within that zone and water, wastewater. I'm also going to touch a little bit on streets and drainage with this presentation. And while we don't have a lot specifically funded in FY 16 to address Jeff Hamilton area, there is some flexibility in our capital utility program, which I want to just touch a little bit on. The design of some of these components is one aspect that can be looked at in advance of actually doing construction activities. Sometimes we do that in specific projects in certain areas where we want to get a jump on, on some work in advance of redevelopment actually occurring. So, talk, talk a bit about that. Next slide. So, the Jeff Hamilton Park area, as you all know, is off East Avenue H on the east side of town, and it's about 20 blocks bounded there by the yellow line. Jeff Hamilton Park is shown there in yellow. And, next slide. And while we look at that area, like I said, we did look at all infrastructure components, sidewalks, curb and gutter, water lines, hydrants, sewer, and street and drainage. And you can see the statistics there on the left side of the infrastructure that's actually in that area. When we look at the system, we do, we do see the potential for improvements in the area, really in all, in all aspects, except for the drainage pipes and channel. Our drainage system, underground, the channel that runs diagonally through that area is in very good shape. We have started to, a systematic process to actually go in there and start to upkeep the channel a little bit more by removing some of the trees. We don't necessarily want to get in there and eliminate all the trees because some are still going to be necessary to help with the erosion control on the slopes, but clearing out of certain areas is warranted. So, that has begun, and that will be a continuing process through the years. You can see the statistics on the water line and wastewater lines. I'll show a map of both water system and wastewater system, and then some of the street improvements that we have scheduled. So, on the water side, what's shown on the map are, is the existing water system within the area. We've done an assessment of all the infrastructure. Everything that's shown in blue are pipes that are fairly new, new pipes within the last 10 to 15 years. So, those pipes are in service, six inches and larger. We don't see any need, immediate need to really do anything in those areas because the system is in good condition. What's shown in red are some areas that have the potential for some improvements. Either they're undersized lines that could be upgraded to larger lines to provide more capacity, more service to those areas. And then some, some of what's shown are also some waterline extensions. So, we've also taken a look at the fire hydrants in the area, and the coverage on hydrants as currently exist is very good, but we are proposing to actually upgrade some hydrants on the older lines as we go in there to upsize the existing lines, just to bring everything up to standard. On the wastewater side, this is a similar map. Everything north of the channel has pretty much been replaced already, again, within the last 10 to 15 years, so it's deemed to be in good, good condition. We have TV cameras that we use to go into the system and look and see what the condition is, and those areas shown in red south of the channel are in less good shape. So, those pipes there, we would recommend be looked at closer and potentially designed and upgraded in the future. On the streets, as you know, in this area, we have a combination of streets. Most of the roads are rural section roads, which means they do not have curb and gutter. So, one of the things that we've looked at is upgrading some of those roads to a more urban type of road with curbs and gutter. And really, there's nothing wrong with a rural type section. The difference is really how you handle your, your drainage and your stormwater. So, in a rural section, you would move that water out to the ditches, and then the ditches would carry the flow down to the channel or, or an outlet. On an urban section road with curb and gutter, you would take that water and move it to an underground pipe. So, it's really just a matter of how you, how you move the rainwater. There are some, some more significant street issues on some of these roadways, which may require reconstruction, more significant reconstruction. Those projects are not identified at this time in the TCIP or any other capital program, but that is something that could be looked at, again, in the future. What's shown in red are projects that are in the TCIP for future overlay. In FY 16, there are no roads in the Jeff Hamilton Park area that are slated for overlay. The roads are outside of that area, but in future years of TCIP, that entire area, what's shown there in red, is slated to receive overlay. And this is a little bit broader picture of what's in the TCIP with regard to overlay. Everything in green are roads that have received overlay, and everything in red are those areas that are scheduled to receive overlay in the future. And I will say, for FY 16, about 30 percent of our total dollars slated for overlay, which I think is about 1.4, 1.5 million, will go towards streets east of First Street. Excellent. Okay, onto the capital improvement program. So, as already mentioned, our CIP program is really targeted in two areas. One is to maintain what we've got, and the second is to grow our systems. And really, it's important to do both. Obviously, we want to make sure that those services to our customers are not impacted or disruptive, and the second is to just support a growing community. So, we do, we do this in a lot of different ways. We do it within the operational budget, and we also do it through bond capacity. So, this is another area that sometimes is somewhat fluid, depending upon what types of industries or businesses are coming into the area, where our maintenance needs are. And so, every year in the budget, we go through a very systematic process where we very clearly lay out what's, what's on the schedule for the next year. And really, we're looking at more than a year. Our projections look at five, 10, even 20-year outlays at times, depending upon the types of projects. So, there is some flexibility, but we take a snapshot in time in the budget, and then we're also revisiting that really on a quarterly basis to make sure that the projects that we're doing are the right projects. So, this, this is a look at how many dollars have been spent over the last few years on the Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Program. You can see that we range anywhere from 10 to 20 million dollars a year. Our target is somewhere around 15 to 20. It's variable depending upon where the needs are and how quickly the projects move and are implemented. So, this year, we project to be at about 26. In reality, we're probably not going to hit that mark, but that's what's in the current budget. And then next year, what's in your preliminary filed budget is a $19 million plan. As with a lot of large projects, some of these projects are complex, and they span multiple years. And I've just listed a few projects of interest. I think we've talked about all these projects before, but I kind of wanted to recap where we are. One note, we are, we are past the midpoint of a five-year rate, Water and Wastewater rate period. And so, probably within the next year or so, we'll be revisiting more of the fiscal revenue side of the side of the system so that we can continue to support the projects. So y'all may remember the Bird Creek Interceptor project. This project's been ongoing since about two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. It's a very large project. It's a little under twenty million dollars. Most of the project's been designed and more than half of it has been completed. You can see in purple, green, and yellow, those are the three segments that have been finished for upgrade. And, and blue and in red, those are the two sections that remain to be built. This was a complicated project. The focus of it was, is really to reduce inflow and infiltration into our system and to be able to carry more water down to the, to the wastewater treatment plant on ninety-three. This is really driven by a number of different things. We're moving forward with this in very segmented parts so that we can make sure that we are successful in getting to the end. We've saved the part in the middle, the blue part will be next within a couple of years. But there are a lot of easements associated there. And so we're working with property owners and making sure that we, we do that one right as well. So that's Bird Creek. And another project that's been in the works for a few years is what we call a Trotter Oak Waterline Improvement Project. This is a major water transmission main, which runs from the water plant, which is on the left side, down at the Leon River, north along the river tracks and just north and west of I thirty-five up to the loop. And this line is around eighty years old now. So it, it is, we, we experience significant breaks on this every year when we have to take down an eighteen-inch water line. It's pretty disruptive. It can impact service to the customers. And so it's a high priority project. I think the design is, is pretty much finished. We had a few easement issues. I think some of those are getting resolved now. So we'll be beginning construction on this project soon. The Leon River Interceptor, and I apologize if the graphics are a little small, but we've talked about this also for a while. It's been in design. Again, we're working through easements and some property owner development interests in the area. The primary purpose of this project is to, to provide wastewater collection service along the I thirty-five corridor from the Leon River north, so that we can open up that entire area to gravity sewer. And it's, this one will actually be in a couple of phases. The first phase is the one we're really focused on now, which is finished, which is the part from the Temple Belton plant on the south side of town, across the interstate up to the river tracks. And this is a slide that just kind of reminds everybody of our transportation capital improvement program. And the reason I put this in here was just to mention that our utility program really supports our transportation program because we do not ever want to put a new road on top of an old aging infrastructure. So wherever we're putting down our new roads, new pavements, we're looking at what's underground and doing what we can to make sure that we, we can minimize any kind of disruption to those new pavements. I'm going to talk just for a minute about the Temple Belton wastewater plant. This, again, this is on FM ninety-three and this is the plant that serves about seventy percent of the city of Temple. It's jointly owned by, with the city of Belton. And the plant's actually been in service for a little over forty years. Next slide. It's been expanded a few times in its history. You can see the numbers there. It's a ten MGD plant. The peak is three times that, thirty million gallons a day. And up until twenty-eleven, the facility was owned by the Brazos River Authority. There were some bonds, the BRA actually financed it back in the seventies and the cities have paid back those bonds to the BRA over time. And so now it's owned by the cities. And it's just so happens that we're at the point of needing some significant upgrades. So we're just at the point now where, where starting to move forward with, with design, with some design components and really getting that plant into a position where it can service the future, future residents here in Temple. The process itself actually started a number of years ago in two thousand and seven. That was really when there was, started to be some in-depth look at the facility. I think at that time it was, the BRA was handling this. But operational issues became significant and the plant was just approaching some limits. So some work was done on the facility side. And then in two thousand and eleven, preliminary engineering report was done. There were some hydraulic triggers that were hit, which allowed us to move forward with a preliminary engineering report. And again, this, this project will actually expand the plant from ten MGD to an eighteen MGD plant, so almost double the capacity in size. The first part of the project will address the headworks, odor control, and aeration. Right now, the engineer's preliminary OPC or opinion of probable cost is a little over thirteen million dollars. And that is a shared cost between the two cities, a share of seventy-five, twenty-five percent. We have some money that's been currently budgeted, one point one. And then in the upcoming budget, there is an additional eight that's been programmed to support that work. And then beyond two thousand and sixteen, there will be another fifty-three million dollars worth of improvements that have been identified in the preliminary engineering report, which will get us to the eighteen MGD. And that's why I say it's really important that we sequence our multi-year capital improvement program with our financing plan to make sure that we are actually able to get to the end. This is just a highlight from the preliminary engineering report. It's, it's a, it's a very comprehensive document, which lays out the total costs. You can see there's a lot of detailed information there, but the numbers are about sixty-five million for the total project. Some of the OPCs are still being looked at closer and so we really are looking at probably more like a seventy million dollar project. What's shown in red, highlighted are the, are the three different parts that we're going to be working on first. So the headworks, aeration, and then some work related to IFAS. IFAS is, is a kind of, a new technology, which has been used in some municipalities, Lubbock and the state of Texas and a few others. That's the, that's the technology that we've been looking at to use this. We're still working with the engineers, work through some details. But right now, you can see the numbers on those types of treatment technologies and kind of where we're going. So over the next few months or a few weeks, we're going to continue to work with the engineer to negotiate the proposal. Next slide. So it's phase one, two, and four that we're moving forward with. And we do anticipate bringing a final design contract to council in the fall for that On the water treatment plant side, we've shown a picture of our conventional facility. On the right, the two tanks there are clear world tanks. That's our finished water. We send, we send that out to, to the city. And the water is, actually comes in from the Leon River from the left. So it travels through some major pipes into the clarifiers, which are the facilities in the middle. And then it travels through the filters and then a part of the water is treated at the membrane plant, comes back and gets pumped out. So some significant upgrades are needed here at the water treatment plant as well. Next slide. Our conventional plant is about sixty-five years old. It's a conventional clarification, flocculation plant, as I just mentioned. It's been upgraded similar to the Temple Belton plant a number of times over the years. And it's really just ready for a makeover. It's, when we've expanded it, it's been done in parts and pieces. And so some of the processes just need to be looked at and efficiencies need to be brought out so we can get, make sure that we can treat enough water as we move forward. The membrane plant is a much newer plant. It's just built in two thousand and four and it's, it's a newer technology and it's rated eleven million gallons. So with the membrane plant, that does require capital replacement annually. There's some, usually some higher electrical cost. We, it's, it's helpful for us to have a conventional plant and a membrane plant because it helps us have two different ways to treat the water. So we're, we're a little bit redundant and have some flexibility in how we treat and move water out to the system. In two thousand and eleven, we took a look at our conventional plant and completed an assessment of the facility, which kind of provided a roadmap, basically to get our forty-one million gallons per day back up to where it needs to be. Right now, we can only, we can only treat a percentage of that, just based upon some constraints and bottlenecks in the system. And so this assessment helped us identify what are the steps that we need to take to increase and restore our system capacity. And again, seventy-two million gallons per day is what's in our comprehensive plan now and our master plan that shows that our facility needs to, to support ultimate build-out of one hundred and thirty-five thousand residents. There's really three primary areas for improvements in this project. One is at the raw water system itself, the pumps and the piping. The second are, is our enhanced water treatment capabilities, just the process itself, the clarification, the flocculation, the filters, some improvements need to be made there. And then just sustaining that potable water delivery through the pumps that are going to send water out of town. That includes some chemical processes, bringing the membrane water back over to conventional, tying it all together and being able to push it out to the plant. So all in all, a lot of different parts and pieces. Our projections at this point in time is that this, this will be about a fifty million dollar project. So again, it's a project that will have to be phased and sequenced over the next several years to, to get us to where we need to be. You can see some numbers there on what's currently budgeted, one million dollars already underway. And in sixteen, we've got another six million dollars programmed. And then beyond that, in future years, will be another forty that will be sequenced. And with the plant, two plant projects hitting in a similar time, we're going to have to be really focused on, on being very thoughtful about what projects we do because we want to make sure that our overall capital improvement program is balanced. So we're addressing not only the treatment needs on the water and wastewater, but also the distribution and collection. So all those different parts and pieces are important. We want to make sure that all of our pipes stay together and that we can treat all the water on both ends. So that's all we've got. Happy to answer any questions.
On the water treatment plant, we hear a lot about the zebra mussels in Lake Belton. Does that get down below the dam into the intake structure? Is that a...
Yes. We've, about a year ago, we started to see some zebra mussels in the Leon River. For a long time, they had, there'd been a lot of native mussels around and that, it wasn't unusual for us. But when the zebra mussels started to come in, that is a point of concern. Right now, we're able to knock those down with a chlorine dioxide that we feed right where we take the water out of the river. And so we kind of have a temporary barrier to prevent that. But long-term, we really want to make sure that we put something in place to, to be more of a proactive protection for the zebra mussels. They can become very problematic. A lot of plants up in North Texas and throughout the country, up in the Great Lakes region, are struggling with that. And we really want to keep those out. So yes, zebra mussels, protecting our plant from those will be a part of this project.
Oh, you see pictures of them just attack everything and, and intake structure, I'm sure. Just clogged up and everything, have trouble with it.
And Ms. Myers, if we could receive an overview and update regarding the strategic investment zone and grant and incentive program?
Sure. Quest, I think, that we got from council last meeting was to give a little update on our CS program. Just to refresh council on, on what the program's about. Next slide, please. The strategic investment zones are neighborhoods, corridors, or properties within the city that because of their location or their condition or their history are likely to have a greater-than-normal impact on the overall quality of life in the community. The purpose of our strategic investment zone program is to make the city a more desirable place for residents and businesses and primarily to encourage the redevelop, the redevelopment of residential and commercial properties. The city actually has ten corridors that have been identified as strategic investment zones. We do not have grant programs associated with all of those corridors, but we do enhance code enforcement activities in those areas and, and other programs. But there are several that we actually have a grant program associated with. Next slide, please. So our grant corridors are South First Street, Avenue GNH, North Third, MLK Junior Boulevard area, and then the newest one that you all adopted last year is our Central C and Adam Avenue. The purpose, again, of the grant is to stimulate redevelopment, attract new development, address deteriorating public infrastructure, build out infrastructure to T-MED standards when that's applicable in the First Street District, grow the tax base and grow and retain So this is just a map of our current five zones. Next slide, please. So we've grown this program over, over the last several years. We started in oh-eight with South First Street and then we slowly, slowly added zones. Again, with your most recent one being last summer in two thousand and fourteen, we added Central C and Adams. We've, next slide, please. We've had slightly different, very minor differences between the five different districts, but we do have slightly different amounts that properties are eligible for under those five districts. Most of the grants are capped at forty-six thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So, and go ahead. We have a, to date, from the beginning of the program, council has authorized thirty-two different grants. And you can kind of just go through the next couple of slides, list those out, these, starting from the earliest one. Next slide, please. Twenty-four of the grants are complete. And next slide, please. We do have three that are currently in progress. Pygnetti's, Heartland Resources, which is the Vinoteca property, and Wes's Burger Shack, which is the remodel that he's completing after his fire. So like I said, twenty-four are done, three are in progress, and the other five were not completed. The property owner decided not to move forward with the project or, or the grant expired. We do have, can you go back, please?
So the ones that are not completed, or I guess expired, that money goes back into the pot, is that correct?
That's correct. And we currently have two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in remaining funds, which we feel like is a healthy balance to move forward with. So we are not proposing any additional allocation for the, this program in FY sixteen, but this amount of money will move forward with us. I do, I've had one very recent inquiry in the downtown area and we have one additional grant application that has been submitted in the downtown area. So, you know, those may or may not move forward, but, but there is, has been some recent activity, mostly in, in downtown.
There's only three in progress right now and...
Two pending.
Two pending and those expired and, and some...
Right. Either the property owner decided not to do the project or they did the project without the, without using the grant funds. So, okay. Next slide, please. So we did have a couple of program updates that staff have, have been working on over the last several months. And we're still in the process of working through this, but I kind of wanted to, since we were doing this briefing for you today, I wanted to give you a heads up. We will be bringing a lot more detail about these potential program updates in the next couple of months. But we've looked at consolidation of zones, perhaps the creation of a specific zone to downtown. The majority of our downtown area is covered by one of the zones, but it's where many of the different zones come together. So, you know, one property on, on Second Street, for example, would be an MLK zone and another would be in the South First Street zone. So just from a, a property owner's standpoint, it's sometimes confusing to them to understand which zone they're in. We've also looked at expansion of some of the zones and then also just doing a general cleanup of the ordinance. It's been since two thousand and eleven, since we've done any adjustments to that. We have, staff has developed a process that is working really well, where our, our grant office with Ashley Williams manages the paperwork side of it in conjunction with planning to go over the details of the project and make sure that it's achieving the grant as proposed or achieving the, the goals of the ordinance, which is to, again, to redevelop our, our infrastructure and, and bring things up higher than, than they are currently. So, next slide, please. So again, and if you'll click, I have some highlights here. So these are, I think you... So these are, I think you might have gone a little too far. Can you back up? Okay. I'm sorry about that. So this area here that's highlighted in yellow is what we're proposing as perhaps looking at for the downtown zone. And we're considering potentially recommending to you that we vary some of the grant incentive programs in that area because of the specific nature of the properties, particularly the facade program might have an enhanced level. You'll have a lot more facade work typically needed in downtown and less landscaping as in other areas. So maybe some adjustments in that downtown core to more appropriately reflect the type of properties that are in that area. And then again, taking the existing zones and instead of having five different ones, just consolidating them all into one zone, just to make it simple for people who are interested in applying. The differences between the zones right now are extremely minor and so we feel like it would be much easier administratively and for people who are interested in applying if there was just the downtown corridor and then all other zones. And then we also have some areas identified as potentials for maybe some expansion areas. We talked about a few months ago with you, maybe connecting the two parts of the Third Street corridor right now, maybe expanding the Adams corridor out to the west where we have a lot of redevelopment potential in that corridor. Again, that's already a CIS corridor, but it's not covered in our grant program. And then expanding potentially the G corridor also out to the interstate, the Avenue GH. It would actually be along H. I think that's my last slide. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Would that tie in with the downtown master plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Back to the regular agenda. Item 6, consider adopting a resolution directing staff to develop a municipal services plan and calling public hearings to consider the annexation of approximately 282.73 acres of city-owned property located to the south of Little Flock Road and to the west of Bob White Road to be used for future expansion of the city of Temple landfill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few slides on this. As you all know, over the last few years, the city has been purchasing property to the east of current landfill to be used for future landfill expansion. The total amount of property that was purchased was the 282 acres approximately. And today, on the action items on today's agenda is the first step in the annexation process. Currently, the city limit line is at the edge of our current landfill and so the property we bought is abutting that line. And this process would bring it into the city limit. Again, the next slide is a map that's located to the south of Little Flock Road and west of Bob White Road. And we purchased the property, as you remember, from several different property owners. Go to the next slide, please. And here's a map of the area. The red line is the current city limit line and then the blue shaded area is what is proposed for the annexation. Next slide, please. Just local government code chapter 43 governs the annexation process. This first step requires council to direct the planning department to prepare a services plan that would provide for the extension of municipal services to the area to be annexed. And then it also requires two public hearings before we even bring the annexation ordinance to you. So the next slide, I believe, is a short calendar. And so the city secretary will mail out some notices in the next few days. It does require that notices be sent to all property owners. The city actually owns all of the property that's proposed to be annexed. But if you'll remember, several of the property owners, when we purchased the property, elected to lease it back from the city. And we have, still have eight current leases on the property. Some of the property owners actually still live there. Others have moved but maybe still use the property for farming and grazing purposes, which is allowed under their leases. So we will give notice to them, obviously, that this is coming. So, and we'll give notice to other public service entities. Publish notice in the newspaper of the public hearings, which the first public hearing would be scheduled for September 3rd. And that's at one of your regular council meetings. That's when the planning staff will present the service plan. And then we'll do a special meeting on September 4th for the second public hearing and then come back in October on the first and the second and have the first and second readings of the actual ordinance that would adopt the annexation. And I think that is all I have. If you have any questions?
This annexation will not affect any property taxes to any landowners.
It will not. It's all city-owned property. That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion on item 6.
Take a motion for approval.
Second. Second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales. Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 8, consider adopting a resolution confirming the appointment of Amanda Rice as a deputy city attorney and setting compensation for the position.
So sadly, Megan Davis, who was hired as a deputy city attorney in February of this year, is leaving us. Her husband got a job offer that he could not refuse in Conroe. So she has given her notice and she'll be leaving at the end of August. Fortunately, Amanda Rice was an applicant in the last round and we reached out to her. She was still interested in the position, very qualified graduate of William &amp; Mary Law School and has been working as a postgraduate fellow for the city of San Antonio for several months. And so she'll be joining us towards the end of August as well if this item is approved. So...
Motion for approval of item 8 on the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.